Okay, we will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, August 20th, 2018. I'd ask that you all please rise for brief invocation to be filed by the Pledge of Allegiance. As we meet tonight, we are enjoying the fruits of the work of Mother Nature and the very needed rainfall on our community, and we are ever thankful for all the support that that will bring to the numerous flowers and plants and items of interest that so many people rave about as they walk around downtown Batavia, and our commitment to nature and the betterment of the Fox River in the days ahead. So, we are pleased with the rainfall, and we just want to acknowledge the goodness of our community and all the work that so many people have volunteered over the years in doing to make our downtown as vibrant and as pretty and as active as it is today. Tonight, we also want to remember those from our community who are serving in foreign soil in the defense of the liberties of the United States of America. We just ask for a special blessing to be showered on every one of these men and women, along with everyone else from our nation who is so ably serving in the defense of our liberties. Also tonight, we want to ask for guidance and direction and understanding and vision as we act on the various items before us on the council's agenda, knowing that each member of the council is here tonight to act in the best interests of their hearts and minds and what is good for Batavia and its future. We ask for all these blessings, amen. Alderman Serrano, would you lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands one nation under God invisible within the routine justice of our law.
Ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible) Let the record reflect that thirteen of the fourteen elected members of the City Council are present in the calendar force, so we obviously have the necessary quorum to conduct business. I had the opportunity to talk with Alderman Lay earlier in the day, and he indicated that he has every intention of being here. He had another meeting tonight early, references personal business, and so he will be coming here within a short period of time, he thought. Moving then to items number four, items to be removed, added or changed on the agenda. Alderman Atech, do you have anything this evening?
Do we want to just leave eighteen as is?
Yeah.
Okay. No, I don't.
Anybody else? Okay, moving then to item number five, which is the presentation of the consent agenda. Alderman Atech is chairman of governmental services.
The consent agenda reads as follows: Accept and place on file committee of the hold minutes from July 10th and 17th, August 7th, 2018. July 18th, building reports, approvals. August 10th, 2018, payroll in the amount of $870,698.07. Accounts payable check register in the amount of $5,736,463.57. City council minutes for August 6th, 2018. Resolution 18-96-R, authorizing execution of a contract for the 2018 patching and seal coating program with Geneva Construction Company for an amount not to exceed $110,533. Approval of a Class G liquor license for the 2018 downtown block party of Main Street at 151 North Island Avenue, Gammon Coach House, Wilson Street Tavern in Rivers Edge, Taco Grande and Pal Joey's. Approval of a Class G liquor license for the 2018 Bulldogs Unleashed for all Taco Grande. I move that the consent agenda be approved as read.
Second.
Move Alderman Atech, second of Alderman McFadden for the approval of the consent agenda presented, any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serrano?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Motion's approved, thirteen yes, no-nos, one absent. And just checking my clock, here it is, 7:35, so we're right on time for item number six, which is the public hearing for the special service area number sixty-two for Batavia Main Street. And I've asked Scott Brunin if he would kind of introduce these next three items on the agenda and allow then for any public comment we made.
Thank you. This is proposed special service area number sixty-two, which is for Batavia Main Street. We had talked about this in committee, and it is regarding the creating a new special service area to cover the partial payment to services for Main Street's operations. Committee had reviewed this and voted ten and one in favor of the ordinance, and this is the required public hearing that is required under the special service ordinance or special service requirements under the state statutes. I should note that we did provide a supplemental ordinance to you that included a small amendment in paragraph three that talks about that Main Street, as part of their levy request every year, would provide an affidavit that would say that they have provided notice of some sort to all the property owners within the special service area. So that was asked for by one of the aldermen to cover some questions about making sure that, you know, all the individual property owners are aware of the levy increase that's being requested. So, if this ordinance is passed, then that would create an active special service area, and we would come back to you at a subsequent time to revoke ordinance, the prior special service area fifty-seven that covered the Main Street, which expires this year anyway.
Okay, so we want to convene a public hearing then. So we're convening the public hearing scheduled for 7:35 on special service area number sixty-two on Batavia Main Street. Does anybody in the public wish to address this evening? Gene, come up and use the mic, please.
Hello, my name is Gene Olmstead. I'm a property owner, record two-twenty-one, West Wilson Street, Batavia. My only comment is, I think Main Street is an admirable organization. My comment is that I don't like the idea of people being forced to be a member of an organization. There's Batavia Chamber of Commerce, there's the Lions Club, there's all these different organizations, and they don't come in front of the city council looking for money. I think that if you want to join an organization, you should be able to, but I don't think it should be forced down your throat. The second comment I have is about TIF that would have to do with this. I realize the amount of money that has been spent over the years through the TIF district downtown. There's been huge grants, there's been a lot of monies given to businesses downtown that have not been paid back. They've been forgiven, or they just have not been paid back. Why is that money not available to cover this expense of the Main Street? Why should the business owners and building owners have to be paying an additional sum of a levy that is not, you know, is not being fairly shared? It should be, the levy should be paid by the people that use it. And I just wish you would consider maybe, if you want to, still pay out a hundred-and-twenty-five percent increase in the potential levy, that you consider taking that out of the TIF money for the next couple of years to give the downtown business owners a break. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you. So, where's Scott at? Our next course of action here, do we want a motion? Are we just letting this be recorded as the public comment time?
We would then close the public hearing, and then later on in the agenda, we have to take action on the ordinance, whichever form you wish to move ahead with, either the one that was in the packet or the new one that I emailed and passed out this evening.
Do we entertain a motion to?
The question that Gene brought up about the TIF, is that possible? I don't know if we can use TIF money.
We can use the TIF for our share.
Okay, so the TIF is available for funding if we decided at some point that's how we wanted to do it rather than an SSAs?
It officially expires, yeah.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Alderman Stark?
Reading the ordinance is written, in section one, it talks about counties and municipalities which are not home rule units shall have only powers granted to them by law and powers. What does that mean exactly? And how does that apply? And could we continue to establish special service assessments if we were not a home rule community?
Yes, special service areas are authorized by statute. And actually, the city has always followed the statutes, and the city hasn't ever deviated from non-home rule authority in setting up SSAs, to my knowledge.
Okay. I just wanted to check, that was the first time that I've ever noticed that language in a ordinance.
Any other questions? Entertaining a motion?
Move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Brown, second of Alderman Stark, that we close the public hearing. Call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serrano?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Motion's approved, thirteen yes, no-nos, one absent. Okay, moving then to item seven, which is public hearing scheduled for 7:35 for special service area sixty-three for Prairie Commons subdivision residential development. Mr. Brunin?
Yes, this is a backup special service area for the new Prairie Commons subdivision. This one and the sixty-four, SSA sixty-four are companion items. One is for the commercial, one is for the residential. Both of these are backup special service areas that would only be activated if the homeowners association or the property owners elect not to maintain the common areas, the detention areas, and the things that they are normally required to maintain as part of their association. So, this would remain as a dormant levy, would be on their tax bills, but it would be a zero-dollar amount collected every year.
Okay, do we have anybody in the audience wishes to address special service area number sixty-three? Alderman Brown, entertain a motion.
I move we adjourn the public hearing for ordinance number sixty-three.
Second.
Move by Alderman Brown, second of Alderman Stark for the closing of the public hearing on special service area number sixty-three for Prairie Commons subdivision. Call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serrano?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Motion's approved, thirteen yes, no-nos, one absent. Moving to item number eight, which is public hearing scheduled for 7:35 for special service area sixty-four Prairie Commons subdivision, commercial development. Mr. Brunin?
This is the companion item to the last one. This is for the commercial part of the property. This also would be a dormant SSA, only activated if it's necessary to maintain some of the common areas or detention facilities within the development.
Okay, do we have anybody in the audience that wishes to address this under special service area number sixty-four for Prairie Commons subdivision, the commercial development? Mr. Brown?
So before I make a motion to close the public hearing, I just want to make a comment that this is probably the tenth or so of these backup SSAs that we've created. I'm not sure of the number, and it really doesn't matter, but I just want to make a comment that I think it's very good planning for the future, so that if anything ever does come up, we've already got this in place. There is no levy being levied at this point in time, it's just precautionary.
Right.
So, with that, I'll make a motion that we adjourn the public hearing for the backup SSA for special service area number sixty-four.
Second.
Move by Alderman Brown, second of Alderman Stark for the approval of closing public hearing on special service area number sixty-four for Prairie Commons subdivision, any discussion? Call the roll.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atech?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chansett?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serrano?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Motion to approve, close of public hearing is approved, thirteen yes, no-nos, one absent. Okay, moving to nine matters from the public for items not on the agenda, anybody have anything this evening? Carl?
Carl Dunlitty, 1156 Pine Street. Tonight, I'm going to talk about, not too long, because I know you've got a big agenda as usual. I watched the midterm reports for August 6th, and in particular Peggy's financial reports, which was great and excellent as usual. But in the area of TIFs, I thought there could be a little more coverage in that area. So tonight, I'm just going to present some facts, no opinions, no analysis. And in the area of TIFs, what I have here in front of me is more than a hundred pages of reports sent to the Illinois Comptroller, signed off from here on June 22nd, 2018, and mailed to the Illinois Comptroller. There was four TIFs, for a total of a hundred and two total pages, and so I'm just going to stick to the facts. On TIF one, on page thirty-seven of forty-three, there was a fund balance, a deficit of $1,474,325. On TIF three, on page three of twenty-five, there was a fund balance of $48,956. For TIF four, on page three of seventeen, there was a fund balance of $18,679. For TIF five, it was seventeen pages, and there was no balance, zero. And if you add the pluses and the minuses for all four of our existing TIFs, you get a balance of a negative $1,406,690. On TIF five, there was an attachment D. If you bear with me, I'm just going to read a couple sentences out of that. "The list of project activities and associated expenditures which occurred during fiscal year 2017 included the acquisition of real property or property rights, building demolition, environmental study, property survey, legal, financial, and other professional services. The funds were paid from the adjacent TIFs, as there is no funding available yet in TIF five. The additional costs exceeded, exceeding hundred thousands of dollars." Excuse me. "The city and Chardin anticipate each will incur additional costs exceeding hundreds of thousands of dollars during 2018 as they jointly proceed with OWP, which, when Washington placed construction activities." Now also, with TIF five, if I can find my paper to show you, I guess I don't have to show you. There was a proposed deficit of $16 million in this TIF five report to the Illinois Comptroller. So I will quit there, I just said I was going to present just facts out of this hundred-plus pages. The only other thing I would like to say for the citizens of the public, Yvonne has been researching TIFs since their inception. Any citizen who wants to learn more or wants documentation, we're in the phone book, call. And if you don't get us, leave a message, and we always return calls. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yvonne Dunlitty, 1156 Pine Street. I get a little bit out of shape when people say that the citizens give out misinformation to the public, when we do our homework and we do try to give out good information. So, I'm going to read something to you here. It's by Gloria Allen, "It's the Home Rule: Turning Citizens into Servants." "The preamble of the Illinois State Constitution declares in part that its purpose is to maintain a representative and orderly government and secure the blessings of freedom and liberty. The Bill of Rights declares that governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. Both these passages convey the idea that we have a government of the people, by the people, and for the people, and that may have been true until home rule was made a part of the state constitution in 1970. Under the guise of giving more power to the people, home rule has placed the coercive power of government in the hands of a few local officials. Article seven, section six of the state constitution automatically gives home rule powers to all municipalities with a population of over 25,000. If a smaller community grows to 25,000, home rule is conferred automatically. A community with fewer than 25,000 residents can adopt home rule by referendum. Home rule units of government are given the authority to license, tax, and incur debt without limitation and without referendum. Home rule units may levy a general sales tax, a tax on services, payroll taxes, a common commodity transfer tax, use taxes, a tax on parking, a motor vehicle tax, a value-added tax, and dozens of others, all without taxpayer consent. According to Jack Segal, a municipal attorney, quote, 'Because of new home rule powers, the possibilities of new taxes are limited only to the ingenuity of municipal officials,' unquote. The Constitution's home rule provision grants home rule units authority to exercise any power or perform any function concurrently with the state. This provision permits double taxation. Home rule units are also given the authority to license for revenue instead of regulation, and authority to impose an income tax.'" Pay attention to license for revenue instead of regulation. "The 1970 Constitution states that the powers and functions of home rule units shall be construed liberally. A home rules unit, exercise of power cannot be checked by initiatives or referenda proposed by its citizens. Such attempts by the taxpayers to control the actions of their elected officials are merely advisory in Illinois, and advisory referendums and initiatives carry very little weight with government officials. In November 1978, for example, a statewide referendum asked Illinois voters if they wanted tax cuts. Voters favored tax cuts by an overwhelming eighty-two percent majority, and Governor Thompson promptly increased taxes. Do we really want to encourage our neighbors to vote with their feet by moving to other states or communities? The only binding referenda permitted in Illinois allow for the adoption of home rule by a small community and for the abolition of home rule status once conferred. Anyone who tries to abolish home rule through the referendum process can attest to the difficulty of the battle. Tax dollars can be used against the taxpayers to pay the salaries of public employees who distribute leaflets against the referendum, to pay for vote no advertisements placed in local media, and to compensate a government attorney to challenge position signatures and fight the people's position in court. Home rule makes government by the people impossible. It does not lead to local control of decision-making and does not give power to the people. Instead, home rule disenfranchises the people, completely reversing the proper roles of the citizens and their elected officials. Under home rule, government becomes the master and the people its servants. Thomas Jefferson warned of this in the early history of our nation. We must not," and this is a quote, "we must not let our rulers load us with perpetual debt. We must make our election between economy and liberty, or perfusion and servitude. If we run into such debts as that we must be taxed in our meat and in our drink, in our necessaries and our comforts, in our labors and in our amusements, for our callings and our creed, then we will have no time to think, no means of calling the mismanagers to account, but must be merely glad to obtain subsistence by hiring ourselves to pivot their change to the necks of our fellow sufferers." Gloria Allen is president of We the People and is a member of National Taxpayers United of Illinois. Now, also, on April 29th, 2004, from Bill McGrath, who was your city attorney prior to Laura Newman, or city administrator prior to Laura Newman, the memo was to Linnea Miller of Government Services, she was the Government Services Committee chairwoman. There was a comparative analysis of Illinois home rule, the advantages and the disadvantages. There were seventeen items listed on that list. Twelve of those were advantages to the city, four were advantages to the citizens. The four advantages to the citizens were limits on property tax power, voter, and this is for non-home rule, limits on property tax power, voter control over borrowing, limits potential for abusive power, and voter control over the form of government. There was one question mark in those seventeen R items, and that was question mark with subject to property tax caps. And I believe if you look up the statutes, there is no tax caps applicable to home rule, excuse me. On Friday, December 6th, 2002, which was also included in this packet from Bill McGrath, from 8:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m., the Duquesne Valley Council in Geneva gave a presentation intended to be a basic primer on home rule. And it was home rule versus non-home rule authority. And I have all that information, I've had it for a long time. As to crime-free housing, now, the law is a law in Illinois, and crime-free housing is a function of law enforcement, and the only thing I can see that would attach it to home rule is the ability to license and charge occupational taxes and other fees and restrictions. Add to that that the ACLU has taken up the clause, and they are asking, they're saying that it is punishment to tenants and landlords for calls to the police. And I can read you a short blurb on that, you can look it up yourself, HTTPS, www.ACLU.Illinois.org, and then it goes in, crime-free housing ordinances, there are a lot of backslashes. Anyway, many towns and cities in Illinois have laws called crime-free or nuisance property ordinances that punish landlords and tenants based on the need for police or other emergency services at a property. This can happen even when the tenant was the victim of the crime or called the police for protection. No one should have to choose between keeping their home and calling the police for help. Research in other states has shown that these ordinances are disproportionately enforced against survivors of domestic violence who seek police protection. Individuals with disabilities and others who need emergency services are also harmed by laws like these. These ordinances may violate the First Amendment right to petition the government, due process guarantees, and federal and state prohibitions against housing discrimination. In response to these concerns, Illinois recently passed a state statute to protect survivors of domestic or sexual violence and individuals with disabilities from being penalized as a result of calls to the police for help. The new state law says that tenants and landlords who are penalized or threatened with penalties because domestic or sexual violence has occurred at their property or because of a need for police or emergency assistance as a result of a disability can ask the courts for help. The ACLU of Illinois is working to inform tenants and landlords of their rights and to make sure the local governments know that these types of penalties cannot be enforced under the new law. And it says, "As a landlord, you may be affected if you were encouraged to evict tenants because they called the police, used police services, or experienced crimes on the property. You were warned that you could be fined or face other penalties because of police calls or visits on your property, even when the tenants were victims of crime and called for police protection. You were encouraged to evict a survivor of domestic or sexual violence or an individual with disability because of calls to police or crimes committed on the property." Now, I direct your attention to the home rule, city of ordinance, or the crime-free I don't think so. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Moving then to item number 10, the chamber, do we have somebody from the chamber tonight?
I'd like to respond to a couple of the things because
Just sit down for a moment.
Yvonne just got up and said that, you know, we're talking about misinformation, and I believe our city attorney has found it online here that one of the claims she just made is false. The, is it a tax on service?
Yeah, if you're keeping score, the Illinois Constitution, Article seven, section six, subsection E, says that a home rule unit shall only, shall have only the power that the General Assembly may provide by law in the following areas: to punish by imprisonment for more than six months, or to license for revenue, or to impose taxes upon or measured by income, earnings, or occupation. So in other words, in those areas, home rule authorities only have the same authority as a non-home rule authority, meaning that it has to come from the General Assembly. So, the statements that were just made, that those are authorities that a home rule entity has are false, because the Constitution, it's right there in the Constitution.
Kevin, question regarding spending city money on working towards the referendum, to not pass referendum, is that factor fiction? Can we spend city money on putting up signs or?
Cannot.
Okay, thank you. That was another falsehood that came out of that diatribe.
Yeah, we, we can't spend, public funds and people in public positions cannot work in their public capacity to promote for or against a proposition.
And crime-free housing, I've noticed that Neighborville, which is also a home rule community, also has that, and they use it in expensive housing developments as well as lower-income housing developments. So at what point is it discriminatory if you're doing it across the board for any building that has over six units?
I couldn't comment on that. There's probably statistics, there's probably a lot of factual information that would go into having to analyze that type of thing as to whether in fact it does have a disproportionate impact on people in certain categories, I don't, I couldn't speak to that.
No, that wasn't the question, it's if you have, if the crime-free housing law in a community applies to any building that has over six units.
Right.
Then it is, it's applied equally in terms of what the law says, in terms of, I'm not saying how it's
That's true. I think, I think, I think what she was reading from was getting to a disproportionate impact type of analysis, which would be a different.
Right, exactly.
Right.
But to set up the program is, it doesn't matter, as long as you meet a certain criteria, you have over six units, it's equal for any building.
In that sense, it doesn't discriminate between
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
That's what my point was.
Anybody else, Alderman Callahan?
Just a quick question, since I don't even know if I was born when it was actually put into the unit, the Illinois Constitution.
1973.
Yeah, no, 1970.
Oh, boy, I was close.
Yeah.
You were born then?
But it was said that it was put out there as a possible abuse of power, and those things always make me bristle about governant and the abuse of authority. But it wasn't Batavia City Council that put it into the Constitution, it wasn't the General Assembly that put it into the Constitution, it was the voters of the state of Illinois felt with their enlightened positions that it was to be something taken seriously and added to the United, to the federal, not even the federal, the state constitution. And we have not made any changes since then, and there could have been. In the entire 48 years that that has been, you would have thought that somebody would have realized the errors of their ways and pulled it back, but it has not been done.
Other comments? All right, we'll move then to the chamber.
Actually, it's Main Street tonight rather than the chamber, but
They get you as chamber on the
Sorry to disappoint you. I guess, just to introduce myself, I know I spoke to most of you last week when we were talking about the SSA, but we were kind of thrown into the fire there. So, Christopher Fabel just started as the new director of Batavia Main Street. Just a brief background on me, I was the, served a couple of terms as a president of the Chamber of Commerce in Elburn. I've sat on your side of the table, I served two terms on the Village Board in North Aurora. In addition to that, I've served on the Board of Directors of, I think, four different nonprofits before coming up to this one. And for the past five years, been doing, working on my own consulting in digital media and public relations communications. So, that led me to here, and tonight is the Main Street Minute, which is, I guess, something we're going to do every month here, we've been doing for a while. Just briefly to touch on the SSA, I think we've gotten to a good place here tonight. After the discussion last week, I actually, I had a meeting with Mr. Salvati on a whole separate issue Friday, but we got into a discussion about the SSA, and through that, talked to Scott Buning about adding some language just to make sure we actually have the, some language in there requiring notification, should there be an increased request in the SSA. That's totally fine on our part, I met with our board on Friday morning, and everybody on the board just reinforced that, and if we were ever to ask for any sort of an increase, we would be going to the business owners before we even talk to the city, that would be our job to handle that. So, adding that language is fine, we're happy to see that put in there, and we think that's a, a hopeful, a good faith to show that we're, we're trying to create the communication to the best of our abilities. Moving on, Cocktails in the Park, way back on July 21st, that was the last event that we celebrated, that's our annual fundraiser. As opposed to most of the other events we do, cocktails is one of the ones that's actually designed to bring money in for Batavia Main Street. It was a success, the over 500 people attended, we were able to raise over $18,000. There was a little bit of a threat of rain throughout the night, but people persevered through a couple of little brief showers, and everybody seemed to have a good time. Featured a variety of downtown restaurants, they all got rave reviews. That's a good thing, because that goes to encourage people who are there to come back and, and, you know, attend those restaurants and spend some more money downtown Batavia trying to test out the rest of their menu. I'd like to send out a special thank you to our presenting sponsors for that event, that was Boyce Body Works and Gerald Subaru of North Aurora. The time dedicated to Cocktails in the Park, there was a volunteer committee which consisted of nine community members, that was spearheaded by Heather and Justin Kottchen, and 50 volunteers for that event, it's a total combined, almost about 200 man-hours that go into putting that on. After that, we moved on to August 5th for the dinner table, that's actually the start of National Farmers Market Week, which is why it's timed that way. I know so few of you attended, but you got to share a meal with 200 of your neighbors, community members all over, right downtown on the Vooner Batavia Dinner Table, sourced ingredients from Batavia Farmers Market, and the meal was prepared by local downtown restaurants, and then served by community volunteers. The entire thing is designed to raise money for the Batavia Interfaith Food Pantry, and next time we come here in September, we'll present, be presenting a very large check, both physically and figuratively, expect to be about $10,000 when all the bills are paid for that. I want to say a special thank you on that one to our presenting sponsors, Aldi, BEI Properties, and Masala Real Estate, and a special thank you to the time dedicated by all the community volunteers. Our committee is seven people for that, spearheaded by Jessica and Bill McGrath, and we had 40 volunteers on the day of the event, about 175 hours of work went into putting that one on. Coming up next for us, September 2nd, four to nine is the Downtown Batavia Black Party, Lock Party, Taste of Batavia, and the Classic Car Cruise Night. That's sponsored by First State Bank and Xfinity, and that one is a partnership with the City of Batavia and River City Church, as well as our other sponsors, Music Matters, Eleph Dental, Neighbors Magazine, Radco Industries, Hanson Family Chiropractic, Advanced Disposal, and Boyce Body Works. This event is, it's a fun one, I like that it encompasses both sides of the river, car show on one side, we have other things going on, kind of gets people walking back and forth there to kind of experience what everything's like, and get a chance to just take in the, the great views of the river there. We will have three-dollar tastings from several different local Batavia restaurants, there will be adult beverages available for purchase, live music from Dick Diamond and the Dusters, Free Kids Zone, and the Batavia Mothers Club will be sponsoring a pie bake-off once again this year. Looking out a little further, we have Oktoberfest, that's the 5th, 6th, and 7th. We actually added a third day this year, Sunday, the 7th, is going to be Family Day, all-day entertainment, family programming, pony rides, games, there's going to be a brat-trot 5K. I've been told that will involve running sausages, so that's going to be worth turning out just to witness that, and we'll have more details on that coming up. More information, you can always check our website, downtownbatavia.com, all of the social media platforms, Facebook, Instagram, Snapchat, Twitter, or just give us a call, you guys, everybody knows how to reach us, and we're happy to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving to item number 11, which is Ordinance 18-43, establishing special service area number 63 for Prairie Commons Subdivision Retail Development. Alderman Brown, do you have these?
I could take them, Your Honor. So this is for Ordinance 1843, establishing the special service area number 63 for Prairie Commons, as was mentioned in the public hearing, this is purely backup SSA, it's only put in place so that if the HOA fails to maintain the public areas that they're designed to do, the city then has the authority in place to impose an SSA tax on that property within that area in order to hire the work to be done ourselves and, and keep the area maintained to the satisfaction. That's really all I have on it, Your Honor, so I would move for approval of Ordinance 18-43.
Second. Move by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Stark for the approval of Ordinance 18-43, any discussion? Let the record reflect that Alderman Malloy has entered the meeting. Kirk, call the roll, please.
Brown?
Aye.
Rizotto?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Eor?
Aye.
Serun?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 14 yes, no, no's, none absent. Moving to item 12, which is Ordinance 18-44, establishing special service area 64 for the Prairie Commons Subdivision Commercial Development. Alderman Brown?
It's the same as the ordinance we just passed, the only exception is it's for the commercial development area in lieu of the residential area, so I will move for approval of 18-44.
Second.
Move by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman Stark for the approval of Ordinance 18-44, any discussion? Kirk, call the roll, please.
Brown?
Aye.
Rizotto?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Eor?
Aye.
Serun?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Ordinance 1844 is approved, 14 yes, no, no's, none absent. Move to item 13, which is Ordinance 18-55, establishing special service area number 62 for Batavia Main Street. Who wants this one?
I'll take it.
Alderman Brown?
So, we just had the public hearing for this this evening, and we heard some comments on it. This was debated back and forth at the previous committee of the home meeting, and out of that came some recommendations to add some language in there where Main Street would have to notify all of the property owners within the area if they were to desire to ask for an increase in the SSA. The city council has the authority to stop this contribution through the SSA at any time it chooses to do so. I think we have put some pretty good restrictions on Main Street organization to, as they have done in the past, but even more so now, to come in and, and have some discussion yearly, if not every, you know, a couple of times a year, as to what they're doing and, and how their finances are. Certainly, their financial statement is available to us at all times, and if they were to ask for additional funds, as I mentioned, they have to notify the, all the business owners in the area, and they would have to come in front of the city council and give justification for the additional funds. It doesn't mean the city council of the future would grant that, it just means that they have the right to ask for it. But the city council has the right to decline it, and they also have the right to stop the SSA at any time they should choose to do so. Anybody have any questions on the SSA, or Scott, do you have any other comments on it?
I do have some comments. You know, I think Main Street is a great initiative for our community. I don't think it serves the downtown alone. I think we've had a community survey, and again, we know that the community wants the downtown to be improved, that's one of the major objectives for improving our city. But based on what, how I interpreted Chris's report, Chris Easton's, I don't see that the property owners are experiencing any increased value, significant increased value. As I recall, maybe it was four or five cents increase in rent per square foot, and I think that Mr. Olmsted's suggestion of some sort of membership would be interesting to consider, and that I think it's a lot of burden, continued burden on some of the downtown property owners that aren't seeing their values go up in their properties. So I have a concern about this.
Alderman Stark?
Yes, I will not be voting to support this SSA. I have been giving this a lot of thought, and I completely agree with Mr. Olmsted in that the city council is determining that we should tax their businesses with, it's, and it's, it's a pass-through, being collected by the businesses, being sent to Main Street, and we're just a billing facility, but we have all the power here to make that decision. And, and I'm, I'm not excited about that, and it really, what brought it to my attention was when Chris from Main Street last week said something about, you know, it's like the chamber, and no, just like Mr. Olmsted said, it's not like the chamber, you don't get a choice, you don't pay a membership, and you don't get the benefits because you're a member. You are automatically included because you just happen to have property in the downtown. And so, while I think Main Street is an outstanding organization, and they've done a lot of great things in our downtown, and they bring a lot of people downtown, I also think that it was the agreement of the council when it was set up years ago that this would turn into a self-funding organization, and it continues to not be self-funding, the, the city continues to give money via the TIF, as well as the downtown business owners give money through an SSA, and so I won't be supporting this.
Anybody else in the council? Alderman Callahan?
I hear what you're both saying, and I appreciate that, and being as I was a no vote last week on this, for some of the reasons that it's partially coming is to make sure that it's a fair, balanced stool. That's, that's why I voted no. It's not a vote no, and we have to separate the organization and the things that they do with the policy that's actually being made. On the flip side, I don't know if we do or don't have, to your point, Lucy, about how much value the business owners are or aren't receiving.
Well, do you want me to answer?
No, no, wait, I'm agreeing with you that I understand that, but right now, tonight, as a vote, would we be harming those businesses that are receiving benefits or believe that they're receiving benefits? I don't want to also just chop the legs out of the stool without knowing what the full repercussions and consequences are. What happens if we say no? What is the financial impact to that? With what you're saying, I would be more comfortable with saying, being as this is for one year only, this is only for one year, and next year, we would then revisit it in its entirety to say, are we doing enough, and then not to just drop it on staff's lap right now to figure out what the impact and the repercussion, ala Sam's Club pulling out, where we're scrambling to find out. I would rather us say, no, this is the last year that we're going to automatically approve it, next year is going to be that. Put up and show what exactly those that are being forced to pay for it are getting their value for, and do they want it? Because while I understand what Mr. Olmsted's saying, I also don't know where all the other property owners fit in, and I'm not saying that they're against it, and I'm not saying that they're for it, I just don't know, and I don't want to answer that question and I just don't know, and I don't want to answer that question and be wrong on it and force somebody into it.
Well, last week, Chris Easton said that what determines whether the downtown is benefiting is increased property values, and it does not look to me like property values are increasing based on the square footage rent that they're getting downtown, because it just really hasn't increased. But we could postpone this discussion and invite all the downtown owners to come in and ask them what they're feeling.
And that's why I fully agree with you. On a numbers, numbers are they, but there's also some value judgment for some businesses that they may be making that's not quantifiable that are saying, it's not necessarily about how much my rent's increased, I get X benefits. And without that knowledge, it's just an incomplete part of the story. It's not to say you're wrong or that the argument's invalid. It might totally be. Everybody could be saying, yep, my rent's only increased very minimally. But 51% could be saying, I get this much more in return that we don't know about. So it's not that you're wrong or anything along those lines, it's just that, based on the information that we have, just as I was a no last week with not wanting to, I think the question was posed to me, do we know that 51% are against this and could kill it right now? I don't know, but I don't, I can see storm clouds on the horizon, I don't need to know when to get an umbrella. So that's the only reason I would a no last week, but I'm also very concerned about just cutting it off at the knees right now.
Chancet?
I would agree with that sentiment. I don't think it's a good idea to hobble them tonight, and I'm not even sure if one year is enough time for them to build a budget. They could survive without the city financing. I think that they need some time to look into it. I think we need some time to visit this, and yeah, we'd like to hear from some property owners. Maybe property value is not the only bar. Maybe someone owns a restaurant, and they make more money because of the more people that are visiting because of events that are down there. There's so many different metrics that we could be looking at. So to cancel it tonight seems foolish. To cancel it next year is a possibility, but I would want to know that they could survive on their own.
Alderman, Etac?
Well, we have had this conversation before and talked about, I mean, we did think it was going to be self-sustained at one point, and I'm not against Main Street, and I wouldn't want to see them go away, but the idea of having a membership for the people that really benefit and have, feel they benefit, they could join. The people like Mr. Olmstead or some of the attorneys that don't feel like they're getting any benefit from Main Street, they wouldn't have to join. But now I'm forgetting, how many years have we been assessing the downtown businesses?
Ten years.
Ten years. That's a long time.
Scott, just, I'm thinking about it, we're all talking about the numbers. What are the numbers per, for the assessment? Dollars?
Was $40,000 is what's in the current SSA.
Right, but I mean, per hundred for property value, I mean, like...
I believe it's 40 cents.
40 cents?
Yeah, but it's adjusted because of the TIF.
Okay.
It was 28 cents last year.
28 cents? Okay, per hundred?
Alderman, Saron?
Just one thing, if we're talking about variables like property value, I don't belong to an NSA personally, but I know my property values are down from 10 years ago. So the fact that theirs aren't up doesn't necessarily mean it's a bad thing. It could be a good thing that they're static. So it isn't a variable that you could just look at alone. There's a lot of variables that go into this.
Alderman, O'Brien?
I don't know how to say it exactly, but I believe, you know, we as a council over the few years have invested a large sum of money in our downtown, and it takes time to generate results from that. But I honestly believe, you know, listening to the mayors, when people are talking to him about our downtown, do it like on the threshold of moving our downtown forward. And I believe that with, you know, businesses that are successful, the buildings in our downtown will be successful. Rents eventually will go up because people are going to want to come into our downtown. And I think we're right on that cusp, so I'd be somewhat hesitant to just start cutting Main Street off. I think they bring a lot of people in. People come in, they're walking around our town, and it doesn't really help the service people like insurance companies or the attorneys, but there are restaurants that'll start to come in more, and businesses will start to thrive more that cater to the walking public. And so I'd be hesitant to just cut them off at the knees right now.
Alderman, McFadden?
Yeah, I think there's a very worthy discussion to be had over whether and how we continue to fund Main Street. I think what they provide right now is a tremendous value, so cutting the legs out from under them without some kind of plan to ensure that they're able to continue doing their work, you know, tonight without a plan, I think would be a big mistake, but I would absolutely support an ongoing discussion as to how we ensure they continue and whether or not we continue to participate in that.
Alderman?
Yeah, I agree with what Alderman O'Brien said, where, you know, we've been putting a lot of money in, and we're on the cusp of that. Unfortunately, it's not like remodeling your kitchen where your value of your home goes up instantly as soon as a kitchen is done. This is, takes time for everything we're doing, everything that Main Street is doing, to really get the downtown to be more vibrant. I mean, the, if you look at it, there's a lot less vacancy in downtown right now than there has been in the last couple of years. So things are filling in, you know, we've got Pizza Place coming, fill up half of Walgreens, so there's a lot happening, and these things are going to continue to bring more and more people downtown, and that maybe that is, we're on the cusp of being able to get rid of this. You know, we look a year down, two years down the road, and maybe it's not needed anymore because there's so much more going on in downtown.
Alderman, Etac?
I wasn't advocating for getting rid of Main Street. I was advocating for the business owners not, that aren't benefiting not to have to carry on and pay monthly assessments. That was my...
Yeah, I wasn't saying to get rid of Main Street, I was talking about the tax.
Alderman Stark?
And quite honestly, what has bothered me most about this, and the reason I don't like the ordinance as written, is I don't like that, even with notice to property owners, I don't like having this being able to roll over from year to year with just a letter that goes out to them, and it comes to council, and this is how much it's going to be. I liked having a more defined process, and I don't like the ordinance, the change in the ordinance. I prefer the old ordinance. So that's the only reason that I, you know, really, aside from, I just, I feel like we need to let business owners know a little bit more. I think this is one of those things that easily gets pushed to the back of their desk, and they get a letter that says, oh, by the way, we're raising, you know, we're contemplating raising the assessment, and they go, oh, okay, yeah, I'll get to that, and then the date comes and goes, and we don't hear from 51% of them. So I just, I don't, I don't like, I don't like us being the people who decide, so...
Anybody else?
Your Honor.
Alderman Brown?
Good comments, good conversation, and I'll agree with you, whoever brought it up, that it was the intent all along 10 years ago that this becomes self-sufficient, self-supporting. I think, as some have mentioned, you know, we shouldn't be cutting the bottom of the stool off here tonight, but I do think that we should kind of push onto Main Street that along with, you know, showing us their financial statements and what they're doing and how they're doing it in order to keep this thing going, perhaps, and maybe they've already done this, perhaps they could do a survey with all the business owners in the downtown area and ask them, if we were to get rid of the SSA, would you support a membership fee of X, Y, and Z in order for them to create the kind of funds that they need to stay in existence? Don't know if they've done that or not, I guess we could ask them, but regardless, maybe that could be something that we would like them, you know, to do in order for us to keep the funding going or to at least consider the funding. Maybe we would find out that downtown business owners would have enough involvement in it that they would say, yes, we would support it. And if they're paying, if they're writing that yearly membership check, maybe they would even become more supportive of Main Street and more involved in Main Street because it's something they're actually writing the check for, not just another add-on tax. So it'd be nice to see Main Street do that, but I think we need to keep this going. We all see the value of Main Street. We all know that 10 years ago, you could roll the sidewalks up on Saturday, and there wouldn't be anybody out there, and that certainly isn't the case today. And it's not only because of Main Street, it's because of the streetscape and some of the other things that the city councils have done in the past. But I think we should pass this ordinance tonight, but we should, you know, I think Main Street is here tonight, so they kind of hear, I'm sure, what we're all saying and what is going to be expected from them in a year, and even in five or six months, when the city's considering the budget for next year, where we have to consider whether or not the city government is going to continue to fund Main Street next year.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that, you know, just along the same lines you just said, that we set a time right around budget time where we would invite Main Street maybe into a COW meeting for a conversation with the membership and the council and find out, you know, we have a new executive director there, and he's just getting his feet wet, and I'm thinking that we got to give him a little time to kind of wrap his arms around everything that's moving here in a variety of fronts, and so we would hopefully give him a little time to kind of put some stuff together and come back, and we could have a conversation mid-year, end of this year, whenever we want, but I'll ask the staff to put this on our agenda for a future COW discussion, and then maybe give everybody a couple, three, four weeks' notice that we're going to talk about this on a certain night at the COW, and then kind of start a conversation for next year as to what it is we do or don't want to do, based on what we're hearing. Kyle, do you want to make a comment?
Your Honor, can I just say one last thing?
Sure.
Just, I guess for clarity's sake, I still believe that our downtown is moving forward, and so I know the, not the business owners as much as the property owners who are funding this, but as, the success of our downtown will increase the rents and the property values for the property owners. And I believe, you know, indirectly, they're paying for it now, and they're not realizing a lot of the give to it or the take from it, but they will, in time, they will, and it'll be, from that time on, a longstanding gain on their end. And I understand what Jean is saying, absolutely. And I said that last week, I believe, at the COW meeting, that people paying for it are the property owners, but I think in time, they will benefit from it.
Okay, we have a motion maker on this, the Congress.
Not yet.
You did, did you make a motion? I forget.
No.
I didn't make a motion.
We've been talking about this so long.
I did not make a motion. I'll make a motion. Scott, the paper copy you've got in front of us here is the same as the online, right?
I emailed it to you today, and this is the paper copy that has the red line on it. That's the current one. The other one in the packet is the other version that you approved at the committee level.
Okay.
So we clarify which one you're going to make a motion on.
Okay, so I'll move that we go ahead, and I'll make a recommendation that we approve ordinance 18-55 as revised.
Second.
Here we have a motion by Brown, second by Stark, and Mr. Dinwiddie's had his hand up here, so let him come up before we... Mr. Marconi wants to speak too?
Carl Dinwiddie, 1156 Pine Street. We've heard from the council, we've heard from at least one property owner, and I was at the discussion all last week and heard about the one year and the 51%, and I've heard those kind of promises before, but unfortunately, I've seen, once something gets momentum, it's hard to go backwards, and I appreciate you want to put in some safeguards, and I appreciate Main Street, and I'm not trying to hurt Main Street, but when I came here almost 32 years ago, Mr. Olmstead had his store right up on Wilson Street, just like it is, about the only place you could get appliances in this town, but when people like Mr. Olmstead or Stan Oak talk, I consider them like institutions in Batavia, and I think we should all listen to them. And I'll be kind, but I did notice that we somehow found $80,000 to put in telephone lines for somebody. We've done demolition, we're going to do, I think, some soil cleanup. What I would like to hear is either a no vote, but at least a minimum, I thought Mr. Olmstead had some good ideas about considering other ways of financing. I'd like to hear either a no vote or at least table this till, I think a couple of you, Alderman, have mentioned, you'd like a little more information and data to support this one way or the other. So that's the way, as a member of the public, that's the way I think about it.
Mr. Marconi?
Hi. First, as a matter of fact, in terms of what Main Street does and what they stand for, I'm a great supporter. I think they're a great organization, and I think they can bring great value to our community. But in terms of what they're doing for the property owners, because we're talking a lot about the property owners, because the property owners are the ones paying for it, I don't know if my tenants are getting great value from them, and we talk about, you know, the vacancy rate in downtown is decreasing and things are filling up. Well, that's happening because I'm putting investments into my property, or other property owners are putting investments into their property owner, into their properties. I can't say that's happening because of, you know, of things Main Street's doing, and when we talk about Main Street, my tenants don't know who Main Street is, and I think that is the problem. The only time I hear from Main Street is when they want to talk to me about using one of my parking lots. That, to me, is a problem. I think that they should be more calling the property owners, getting the property owners in a room and saying, here's how we can help, here's how we can work together to do things, because everything I've heard so far is, well, the restaurants, the restaurants, the restaurants. There's a lot more in this town than the restaurants. My sister owns a dress shop, my stepmom owns an antique store, we just moved in an awesome new accessory store, we've got a new restaurant coming to town. None of these people were recruited by Main Street, and none of these people were recruited by the Chamber either. They came to Batavia because they wanted to be in Batavia, which is awesome, and I think it's great for all of us, but how do we get Main Street to work more with the property owners? I think that, if we could do that, you know, I'd gladly put in whatever we could put in in terms of helping fund it. I think that would be awesome, but I think we have to have a way to make everybody work together, because if people aren't working together, we're just, we're really focused on a few areas of town, because what are we doing, you know, what's Main Street doing that's really helping the west side of town? How are we getting people up there? Because we talked about, it's great if we can bring people to town and they frequent the shops a little bit more often, but when are the people coming to town during business hours, and when are they coming to town during business hours on the west side of town? Because everybody has to benefit, because everybody's paying for it. Those are just my ideas, and those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Olmstead?
I greatly appreciate the tremendous back and forth on this. I mean, this is really, this is more real government than I've seen in a long time, but I just want to make it clear, I'm not looking to have Main Street abolished. My point was, when I looked at this letter, and it said that they could increase the tax rate from 40 cents to a buck or whatever like that, that was my biggest concern, was this ability to raise the rate. I am, by the way, there's a sticker on my window, I am one of the founding donators to Main Street. You know, I think it's a good organization, but I think it's something that you should pay into. When it originally started, there wasn't any tax. It was done by donation. Then there wasn't enough money raised, so consequently, the city decided the appropriate way to do it was an SSA, because they forced people to donate that they really didn't want to donate as much money as was necessary. But my biggest concern is the fact that this ability to raise it up to a dollar, and I will note on your comment about the value of downtown, I was shocked, I've put a fair amount of money into my building the last couple of years, I was shocked when I received a notice that my assessment, or my valuation had dropped significantly by the assessor without my requesting it. So that, you know, that might have some bearing on the value of downtown property. That doesn't happen very often. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just say one thing, Your Honor? Alderman? Thank you. Just the comments by Mr. Marconi, I appreciate those comments, and that's something that we haven't heard, and we have the executive director sitting right in front of you, maybe you guys can talk it out, and come to some meeting of minds and have things work a little more smooth.
Alderman Callahan?
Yeah, this is actually a great example of, there's a group called Stronger Towns, and there's an article that came out recently about... Towns, and there's a article that came out recently about how most public engagement is completely worthless. Because the questions are being asked with not really an idea of what you're asking, and for the answerer to not know what they're really answering. It's kind of the, have you stopped beating your wife? It gets thrown out there that, do you support Main Street? Well, that automatically makes people defensive and going, well, of course I do. Just kind of to Gene's point. He's not, he shouldn't have to defend whether or not he supports it. The question should be, business owners, how do you want to fund it? It's ultimately how they're going to do it. And if the majority of people say, we want it funded through, through private donations or through their membership, they now have a roadmap. If they want it funded through an SSA, we now know how they want it funded. Those are, we ought to get to, the questions that we don't know to the, the answers that we're asking is what we should be asking. And to that point, I would only support this current ordinance if it did have an expiration of one year, because then it does put the light, the fire under. I don't want to cut it off immediately, I don't want to do anything without a plan, but we don't know what this community is going to look like in a year. And to be fair to Main Street, it's the same thing. They have to be able to plan. And they will be out there, because I know they will want to hear what they're going to do.
Alman Metzler?
Yeah, I mean, when we talked about this, I don't know how many months ago, I remember the, the, a number of the reactions, myself included, was to the indefinite life. You know, we, we kind of all knee-jerked at that. And I still am not terribly comfortable with it. I understand the annual review for it. But the other things I still don't like, and we've touched on this as well tonight, and I wanted to hear the comments on this, because I was on the fence, and, and last week I spoke to that as well. You know, there's no sunset clause here. There's nothing that says, you know, okay, you've had X number of years already, if we're going to renew the SSA, then there has to be an end of life. Whether that's one year, five years, I don't care, but it has to be spelled out to some degree. And if we're just putting it out there because of timely needing to renew the SSA, then I think that's in haste, and I don't think that's for the right reason. And I think we need to have a more thought out as to how we actually, if we're going to fund Main Street, how we do it. But you, you couple that with, again, the, the property owners, their say is to oppose it if they get enough opposition against it. Otherwise, they aren't voting towards it. That doesn't feel right for me. So I, I will be voting though, as it's written today in front of me.
Mr. Buonin?
Yeah, I just want to address that. I mean, the, keep in mind that the reason why we changed this to not have the five-year term is because it's a lot of work to do this whole process. There's mailings, there's certain public hearing notices that we have to follow, and, and the whole, whole process. We structured this so that if you wish to at any time terminate this, it just takes a motion and approve, approval by the city council itself. So if you, after one year, you say, you know what, we don't like this anymore, we want to get rid of this, then, then just pass the ordinance to remove the ordinance, to, to terminate the SSA. So that you can do at any time. So while there's no official time limit in the SSA, you always have that choice to terminate it anytime that you wish to do so.
Your honor? Alman Brown?
You know, I, I, the reason why I support the way Scott's got the language written on that is because the sunset clause is there. It's, it's, we can cancel it tomorrow. Somebody can make the motion to bring it up and write an ordinance, and we can cancel it tomorrow. For example, I mean, there's a lot of organizations that, you know, through their best intention, just don't make it. So, you know, the executive director could quit, the board isn't real active, they don't appoint somebody new, they don't find anybody new to take over the position. Main Street just isn't really doing anything any longer. So rather than having to be a one-year term or a five-year term that just keeps on going, we can cancel it. And, and nobody pays anything on it. So I, that, to me, that's a pretty darn good sunset clause. I like the way it's been formatted.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor for the approval of Resolution 1855, establishing special service area number 62 for Batavia Main Street. Kirk, call the roll.
I would just like to make an amendment to that, that it will sunset in one year. I'm not willing to make that. What's that? I'm the maker, I'm the maker of the ordinance, the motion, and I'm not willing to amend it that way. We've got a sunset. No, you can amend a current. Well, I guess you can. You can amend a current one, because that's where it goes.
He says you need a second to your motion.
Right.
Second.
Did somebody second it?
I did.
So we need, now we need a motion on the amendment, a vote on the amendment?
Not yet.
Okay, the vote would be then to amend, to put in a one-year sunset. Does everybody understand the amendment?
I think we need clarification on that, Marty, because the, what are you looking to sunset then? The, the city's contribution, the SSA's contribution, a, a one year from when?
To sunset this ordinance in one year. Just like you're saying, it's putting an actual match to what you're saying with, we can make an amendment at, or we can make a motion to end this at any time. We can do that tonight without knowing the consequences. I want to make sure that we have the consequences a year from now, that we can look at them and say, this is what we're doing, instead of a year from now going, well, I don't know, is it fair to them to do it? Now you're another year after that. We don't, we don't know, we don't have enough information from what I've heard from several people tonight. The point of that is, I also want to make sure that we don't put them in a raft with no, with no oars, with no direction. I'm giving them, by this motion, a one-year direction as to, this is potentially what could happen next year, whether or not we had it or not. That sunset is still there. But I want to give them the ability to prepare one real year in advance that it's going to probably end, if they can't justify it.
I, you know, I, without getting into a huge debate on this, that sunset is there. We, we've got that authority. And if we, if we go with your motion, we're now creating the, the public notification, all the mailings and everything else that has to be done in order to continue this again in one year.
And that's exactly what I'm trying to do, is take out the emotion of it, to say, we know we have one year. They have their work cut out for them for one year. If you don't have the feet held to the fire that maybe next year, I don't know what the emotion in this room's going to be next year, because who knows? It's going to be a complete, could be a completely different council, with a completely different structure of how things are, how, how things are being run. I am trying to give them the best upper hand that one year from now, if it sunsets, we can avoid that too by a simple motion that it continues.
We can, we can also, we can also just, just informally, I mean, we have, as Dave said it, as, as Scott presented it, and so we can end it anytime we want. So if we feel the information we're getting back from Main Street is, is, is not sufficient, they're not covering enough, not doing enough, we can have our city administrator write a letter and say, you have one year to clean this up, to straighten it out, or we're going to end it. And then now they've got their notice. Now their feet really are in the fire. And so, and, and that's how we can do it. We don't have to make it a big formal process.
Alman Sron?
I just, a question for Scott. If, if that amendment passed, in a year, we choose to continue with Main Street, we have to, is there cost involved in redoing it?
Absolutely. We have to start the process over again to create the SSA. You know, we're talking several thousand dollars.
And if the amendment does not pass, and in a year we decide to stop it, is there a cost in stopping it?
No, just to passage it, we, we draft an ordinance and the city council just passes that. Can I, can I add one other thing to, to that? One other option that you could consider is in paragraph three, we have the last sentence in that that says, if no specific request is made by this date, a levy of $40,000 shall be established. If we strike that sentence, then we can leave the discretion as to what the levy is to up to the city council to levy zero. And then the SSA is still there, and then it's a dormant SSA. So that might be an option to consider as well.
Forces the discussion.
Correct.
Alman Erd, do you want to make a comment?
Well, I certainly like the idea that Scott just had there, because I think from the discussions we've had in the last couple of meetings, I think it's been very clear to Main Street that we're not, you know, even though we're saying it's indefinite, we not, I don't think anybody here feels it's indefinite. I think the, the language we use with Main Street is obvious to our intent, and they know that it's not really indefinite. And the indefinite part just saves us money and time in the future. And that's, that's the only reason I support it to be indefinite, is because it's time-consuming and it costs money.
Alman Rosado?
Yeah, I thought that at the time of budget as well, if Main Street came to us and said they need $55,000, that we could turn that down and say, no, we're only going to give you 40.
That's correct, yes.
Or we could give them less than 40. So I think the authority is really with the city council here.
That's correct, yes.
So the amendment to vote on is the removal of the one-year?
Addition.
Addition of a one-year sunset clause. So we've got a motion, a second on that, a one-year sunset clause.
So what happens to Brown's original motion? Because there was a motion and a second on the floor.
We vote on the amendment first, and then we vote on whether it passes or it doesn't pass.
Depending on what the amendment does.
Okay.
So the amendment maker was?
Callahan.
Callahan, second by Stark.
Mm-hmm.
So Kirk, call the roll on the amendment.
Callahan?
Aye.
Metzler?
Aye.
Malley?
No.
Yor?
No.
Saron?
No.
McFadden?
No.
Brown?
No.
Rosado?
No.
Attack?
No.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
No.
Wolf?
No.
Salvati?
No.
O'Brien?
No.
So that one was defeated by a vote of, I lost track.
Three to 11.
Three yes, 11 no. So now we have?
Can we, we don't make an amendment?
Can we make an amendment to?
The amendment.
To take Scott Buonin's suggestion of that there is no automatic $40,000, that it's?
We have to decide.
It, we have to vote on it every year?
You making that in the form of a motion?
Are you making it in the form of a motion to amend it?
Yes, second. Motion to amend.
Okay, we have a motion by Erd, second by Saron, that we put the restriction of a one-year limitation on?
No.
No?
Strike the last paragraph, strike the last sentence of paragraph?
Yes, section three.
In paragraph three.
Strike the last sentence of section three.
Yes. In, no, section four, number three. And it's, the wording would be, if no specific request is made by this date, a levy of $40,000 shall be established. That gets removed.
Right.
And so the line before it says, the city council should then levy an amount at their discretion, provided it is $100,000 or less. So that's how we would have the control of what the dollar amount is levied against the SSA.
Hey, does everybody understand the motion then?
Yes.
I just had one more thing too. Just, just, I think the spirit of this too, just, I'm not going to add an amendment to the amendment, to the amendment. The spirit of this is to make sure that we're working closely with Main Street. That, that's what this is about. To, you know, so we can, for more transparency, and I think they're perfectly willing to do that. But the whole, the whole point behind this is to make our downtown better, and ultimately, the community better. So that, that's, that's the spirit of this whole thing. It's not trying to limit things, that's right, well, I mean, there is some of that. But the fact of the matter is, we, we want to grow. We want this, we want Main Street, Main Street to prosper and bring more people downtown and increase, you know, property, property value. So we just, I think the point is, we just want probably some metrics, we want more transparency, we want to work closer with them to show that.
Alman Brown?
I think the beauty of removing that sentence and putting a little bit of restriction on Main Street is, if they don't like it, that gives them more incentive to go out and try to find the funding themselves on how they're going to do this, to stay in existence. So it gives us the ability to help them, it gives us the ability to do a lot of things, but it also gets them maybe thinking about how they're going to fund themselves in the future on their own.
Okay. We need a second on that one?
I think we have a second.
Saron did.
Saron did.
I would just make one remark. For having a new director come on board, this is a very ominous sort of direction that we're taking. I, I would hope that we would, to your point, sir, that we would have very close?
Yes.
Conversations with Main Street, because this sounds worse than a hobbling. This is a, we might hobble you, maybe, maybe we won't. I don't, I don't like that.
I agree with you.
Sentiment. And I would apologize to the new director that that's not the intent of this.
No, and I'll, and I'll support, I mean, I agree with that, and, and just to add to it is, this is more, from my standpoint, why I second, is to encourage or force the conversation and get the, the property owners involved more and, and have them feel like they're part of it as well.
I can support that.
I agree.
Okay, now we're going to vote on the newest amendment, removing that section that. Kirk, call the roll.
Yor?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Attack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Metzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Attack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Metzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Attack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Metzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Attack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Metzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Attack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Metzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Saron?[1665.71] Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salbadi?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salbadi?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salbadi?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salbadi?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salbadi?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salbadi?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salbadi?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salbadi?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salbadi?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salbadi?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salbadi?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 14 yes, no no's, none absent. Okay, moving to item 17, which is Resolution 18-94-R, authorizing sale of municipally-owned
real estate on Danforth Drive. Who's got this one?
Oh, I headed a committee, do you want to take a tape?
Okay.
Aye, sure. I don't have anything out in front of me here right now, but I'm very familiar with the project.
I have it. The city had a piece of property located on Danforth Drive that was left over from some additional parcels that were previously sold. We now have a buyer for that piece of property. This came out of council with a positive recommendation to sell the property to the intended buyer. So I make a motion that we pass Resolution 19-94-R, sale of municipally-owned real estate on Danforth Drive.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman Meitzler, for the approval of the sale of the municipally-owned real estate on Danforth Drive. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salbadi?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salbadi?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salbadi?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salbadi?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Atack?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salbadi?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
Motion's approved, fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent.
Okay, moving to item eighteen, which is Resolution eighteen dash ninety-four dash R, authorizing sale of municipally owned real estate on Danforth Drive. Who's got this one?
Oh, I headed a committee, do you want to take it, Dave?
Okay.
Ah, sure. I don't have anything out in front of me here right now, but I'm very familiar with the project.
I have it. The city had a piece of property located on Danforth Drive that was left over from some additional parcels that were previously sold. We now have a buyer for that piece of property. This came out of council with a positive recommendation to sell the property to the intended buyer. So I make a motion that we pass Resolution nineteen dash ninety-four, our sale of municipally owned real estate on Danforth Drive.
Second. Moved by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman Meitzler for the approval of the min- sale of the municipally owned real estate on Danforth Drive. Any discussion? Court call the roll.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uier.
Aye.
Surratt.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uier.
Aye.
Surratt.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uier.
Aye.
Surratt.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uier.
Aye.
Surratt.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye. Motion's approved, fourteen yes, no, no's, none absent. Okay, moving to item eighteen, which is Resolution eighteen dash ninety-four dash R, authorizing sale of municipally owned real estate on Danforth Drive. Who's got this one?
Oh, I headed a committee, do you want to take it, Dave?
Okay.
Ah, sure. I don't have anything out in front of me here right now, but I'm very familiar with the project.
I have it. The city had a piece of property located on Danforth Drive that was left over from some additional parcels that were previously sold. We now have a buyer for that piece of property. This came out of council with a positive recommendation to sell the property to the intended buyer. So I make a motion that we pass Resolution nineteen dash ninety-four, our sale of municipally owned real estate on Danforth Drive.
Second. Moved by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman Meitzler for the approval of the min- sale of the municipally owned real estate on Danforth Drive. Any discussion? Court call the roll.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uier.
Aye.
Surratt.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uier.
Aye.
Surratt.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uier.
Aye.
Surratt.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uier.
Aye.
Surratt.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uier.
Aye.
Surratt.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uier.
Aye.
Surratt.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uier.
Aye.
Surratt.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uier.
Aye.
Surratt.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uier.
Aye.
Surratt.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uier.
Aye.
Surratt.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uier.
Aye.
Surratt.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Uier.
Aye.
Surratt.
Aye.
McFadden.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Rosado.
Aye.
Atack.
Aye.
Stark.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Salvati.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Callahan.
Aye.
Meitzler.
Aye.